Thank you for joining us for Talks with Tyler ISD, a podcast about the passionate people that have a heart for students. I'm your host Jennifer Hines and today we have with us, our school board president Wade Washman. Thank you so much for joining us today Wade.
Well, thanks for having me. It's an honor to be here.
Well, one of the things that I love about you Wade, not only just your fun personality, but I like the fact that you are a musician and I don't know if everyone knows that about you, that you sing, you write, you're singer songwriter, you play the guitar and all of that.
Yes, a little less than I used to and I can't call myself that great of a musician, but I do enjoy it. I really do enjoy music.
So I saw recently, you don't post very often on Facebook, but I did see recently, you, you did a tribute to Jerry Jeff Walker when he passed away. Tell us a little bit about why you felt like you wanted to play that for everybody, what song you chose?
Well, so I think every Texan has a special place in their heart for Jerry Jeff Walker, especially as East Texas boys who grew up listening to it on the roads of the Ponty Woods and Post Oak Belt. And so that song specifically was Desperado's Waiting on a Train. Guy Clark wrote it and Jerry Jeff Walker really popularized it. And so there's kind of a funny story about kind of why I did that. One of my buddies who is a former leaguer at Eric Thompson, shout out if you're watching Eric or listening, sorry. He, he was in San Antonio a couple of weekends back and he was on his way back to Colorado where he lives and he stopped at Lukinbach, Lukinbach, Texas. And there was this kind of whole funny story. I won't tell the whole thing, but the guy playing there at Lukinbach that night was a former, well, I don't know if he's former Tyler ISD, I don't know. I know his older brother was, but William Clark Green is an artist that's from Tyler and has done pretty well on the Texas country circuit. So he runs into him and then they, they end up visiting and, and hours go by, he's sitting with his band. It was after they finished playing and they found out that Jerry Jeff Walker had died that night. So they made a bonfire and the band came out and they played all the Jerry Jeff Walker songs they could. And Eric was there and he was just telling me how awesome it would be. And I was like, man, I wish I would have been there. I totally would have played something. And so it got me thinking about sitting around a campfire. And so that was my contribution, I guess, to, to that night and sitting around and I would have played Desperado's Waiting on a Train for sure. It would have been one of them. So I just felt inspired to do that.
Well, I'm glad that you shared that with your friends on Facebook. I enjoyed listening to it. I actually went to college with Jerry Jeff Walker's daughter. And while I was there, we'd go over to Jerry's house and you know, he would be there because you know, he's just a dad too. And so I definitely have fond memories of meeting him a few times. And loved the tribute that you played for him in honor of that. So what kind of got you into music? How did that all come about?
You know, I tell people that music and the outdoors, sports, those were like my first three loves, you know, I've, you know, my dad played the guitar. He plays the guitar. And so I grew up listening to him. You know, I just remember as a, as a young child, sitting on the back porch when a storm would be rolling in or something and dad would be out there just kind of picking on the guitar. And we had a pretty fun childhood, good family. My oldest sister Emily, she, she is a musician. She's, she still sings and they have, she's in Waco.
So it runs in the family.
Yeah, she's the good one. Really she is. And, and so, yeah, so just probably about in middle school, you know, dad would always, we'd ask him to play certain songs and he played by ear and, and I kind of do too. And so he would, he would pick out, we'd say, hey, can you learn this? And we'd play it and then he'd, he'd learn it. And, and so that's kind of how there was always a guitar around. So probably in middle school was when I picked it up and started fooling with it.
Well, speaking of playing the guitar, I know you brought yours along with this. You've got some songs to sing for us. Tell us what you're going to sing and, because you wrote this song, right? Is it an original?
Yeah. So always happy to play a little bit, you know, get my fix whenever I can. And
And you've played publicly around Tyler and Elsie. I know I've checked you out at Stanley's with my husband and gone to see you perform.
If somebody's like super desperate for a musician and they know me, I might get up there and fumble through a few songs.
You've played Convocation.
Dad Bod.
Dad Bod Band.
Caldwell Dad Band.
Okay. You do have to tell us about that. How did that get started?
Well, Caldwell Arts Academy, very musical and fun and artsy school. My good friend Bobby Markle, who I went to middle school and high school with is the principal there. And you know, they were having a, they were having a, I think it was a Christmas deal one year and some kids were performing, you know, they had the little star band and, and a couple of the dads were like, well, let's play Run Run Rudolph or something like that. So we did. And that's how Dad Bod got started. And, and so yeah, like it was Travis Sutphen and Doug Ames and there, yeah, it was just a good, good time. And so we were, we played something at Convocation. We played a little Journey one year.
Oh, I love that. I love that. The Dad Bod Band. It could catch on.
You never know. That could be our big break. But, um, so yeah, and I've, I started writing, you know, in high school, I guess. We had a band. We had a band called
What was your band name?
We were Junction.
Junction. Okay. There's a story there.
Well, I don't know. It probably just sounded like a cool name at the time, but it was me and, and some classmates, Matt Ellis, who still plays guitar and gives lessons and is a musician. He's in Abilene and Michael Bethencourt, who is, let's see, Jason Isbell. He is a guitar tech for Jason Isbell. So he's always on the road or used to be before COVID and just a heck of a musician. And then Colin Gendylan was on the drums. So that was our crew and we thought we were awesome. You know, we thought we were so cool because we got to, we'd crowd in Colin's room because he was a drummer and drums are hard to move. So yeah, we would, and his mom was so sweet. She was a teacher for us here and she'd always say how great we sounded, you know, we just, the walls were shaking, I'm sure.
So you started writing when you were in high school and you've continued to write?
A little bit, yep.
The song you're going to share with us, when did you write that one?
This song, and I got her permission. There's my niece Laura Freeman. So I write songs for all my nieces. And so they all kind of have that from, from me, from Uncle Peter, as they call me. It's a nickname. So I wrote this, I've written their songs, you know, fairly shortly after they were born. And so just kind of welcoming them to the world and, and the family and all that.
So is it just called her song or do you have a title? It's called Laura's Song?
This is Laura's Song. You want me to play it?
I want to hear it. Yes, absolutely. I think everybody does.
All right. Well, this song in particular, Laura, when she was a baby, was always on her mom's hip. And you know, if, if she was not on her mom's hip, then she was, I'm sorry for the, yeah, then she was kind of fussing. So you'll get it when, when you hear it. Hey there, Miss Laura. What you fussing about? Little Miss Laura, there ain't no reason to pout. That there's your mama. She ain't going anywhere because she's in love, love, love with you. And that love she's gonna share. That there's your brother. Yeah, he speaks right from his soul. He's gonna protect you. Yeah, everywhere you go. And that there's your daddy. Yeah, he's a big old man, but it's his love, love, love for you that he ain't bigger than. And this whole life can be so cold. But there's two things that you should know. And one's how fragile it can be. And two's to love insatiably. Yeah. Child, you got to love, 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 you see? Yeah, you gotta love, love, love. And we, he told us to love, love, love. And we, yeah, we're gonna be so free. Hey there, Miss Laura. What you dreaming bout? So that's Laura's Song.
Oh, I love that. And so each one of them have their own song.
Every niece has a song. And yes, I have four of them. There's Hattie and Lucy in Waco and Laura or Lolly, as we like to call her, and Charlotte here in Tyler.
Wonderful. Well, you've been sharing a lot of your memories. You were talking about your high school band. You've grown up in Tyler. Tell us a little bit about what it means to you to be a Tylerite.
Well, that means you're from Tyler. What I hope being a Tylerite would be synonymous with would be, first of all, for me, I think, I think of Tylerites as very proud of their community. I think they're proud of, you know, the beauty and the history here. I think of a Tylerite as being somebody who is giving. I think Tyler is a very benevolent community and giving is almost ingrained in, in coming up here, in my opinion. And I think that has to do with another thing. And typically it's, it's somebody who's involved in, in some sort of capacity with the church. You know, I do think that, that that is definitely part of, part of our culture and personality. And I would love for, for that to be maintained even through all of our growth. I think, I think somebody mentioned today at the, the chamber luncheon that nonprofits are kind of the heartbeat of locally. And, and specifically, I think churches just do so much for the community and it's our, as a district partnerships with, with those folks that, that really kind of, I think, put Tyler a little notch up, I think, from, from the rest. And then, you know, we're, we're not part of a bigger metroplex. We're not kind of lost as a suburb. Like we are our own thing here. We're the biggest town in East Texas and we've got, you know, natural beauty all over the place. And so to me, you know, giving and just serving and being proud of where you're from is kind of what defines a Tylerite to me.
I love it. Yes. And I kind of feel like we're a beacon of light in East Texas, so to speak. That's kind of how I, I see it. We moved here about 11 years ago and everything that you just said, I mean, I've seen that out in the community and with those that have moved here from elsewhere and then those that are from here, everybody just kind of embraces that. And I love to see that. While I'm not here, I got here as fast as I could. And I did visit here often growing up. Speaking of growing up, you, you did go through the Tyler ISD school system, involved in a lot of different activities, got some great memories.
I was, you know, Caldwell preschool, which I don't think that was part of the district early on, but, and then I went to Clarkston, you know, from kindergarten to fifth. And then I was a Moore Mustang in middle school, Robert E. Lee Red Raider, back when it was that in high school. And yes, so many good memories, so many friends that I still talk to to this day. I remember all my teachers, you know, from elementary, every single grade. And you know, it's, we just finished with Halloween. I have really good memories as a kid of going to Clarkston and, you know, on the Halloween festival, they, it was, it was an open campus, you know, like they used to be before it was all inside. And the whole interior courtyard would just be filled with kids playing and they'd have classrooms lit up, you know, with one with a cakewalk and the other one, you know, with different things. And so very fond memories of my childhood and Tyler ISD had a lot to do with that.
And of course, high school, you were probably fairly active and student council.
Yes. You know, I was always, I had two older sisters and we were all within four years of each other. So by the time I was a freshman, one, Amy was a junior and Emily was a senior. And so they were involved. It's kind of like, you know, they were involved in student council and so that kind of automatically.
You had no choice. You were, you were, the path was laid for you.
We were, yeah, involved in, in student senate and then, you know, things like FCA. Man, that was, I remember going early to school for those meetings, even in middle school at Moore. And definitely remember specific meetings. You know, it's funny what, what sticks with you.
It really is. You know, you would never think, oh, this was a moment that I'm going to remember, but you remember that moment. And of course, from, after graduating from Robert E. Lee, you went on to Baylor. I know that's a big part of your life. Met your wife, Ashley there. And then you all decided to come back here and you've, you've started raising your family here. Kind of gone full circle. You're a Tyler ISD alumni, now raising future Tyler ISD alumni.
Yep. I mean, it, it has come full circle. You know, if you would have told me that when I was leaving high school, especially, I did not think I would come back here so quick. I wanted to see the world and, and I didn't really have a plan per se. I just knew that I wanted to kind of go explore. And, you know, after college, you know, I was dating Ashley then. And so heck, I had to get a job, right? Pay some bills and get food on the table and all that. So shortly after I graduated college, I went to work and with my dad. And so, and man, we just, and then she ended up coming here for work, totally unrelated to us, but it just happened. And, and so I tell you what, there's not a better place to raise a family than Tyler, Texas. And there's not a better place to retire either. You know, you're seeing that people are moving here from all over just, just because of our way of life. And, and so it's funny, you know, you grow up here because it's a good place to raise a family and then you get a family of your own to come back and retire.
You got, you got everything here.
It's a good home base, no doubt.
Speaking of raising a family, you've got two kids right now that are in school. What, what do they want to be when they grow up? Do they even know? I mean, and, and how do you feel like their education plays a role into that and how Tyler ISD is helping to shape that?
So my, my daughter, I'm just thinking of her right now first, you know, she's seven. She goes to Caldwell Arts Academy. They both do. So when wants to be, it just depends on from day to day.
Right. What's today?
Dancer, actress, teacher, sometimes, sometimes it's a mom. Sometimes it's a, you know, what paleontologist, you know, sometimes it's, you know, it's just, yeah, sometimes it's somebody that's, you know, studying fish or whatever. So that girl, I have no clue, but I don't doubt she could do any of it. And then Van, he's a little different. You know, he's an oldest child. He's much more structured than, than I was. And I think he, you know, he knows, it's funny, he'll talk. He knows he's got to have a job when he gets older and, you know, but he just wants a job. I think that he can perform well at and be a good part of a team or an organization. So I don't think there's any sort of lofty goals of, of anything just yet. I'm sure there will be, but.
They're still finding, coming into their own, finding out what they want to be. They have lots and lots of time. How do you think Tyler ISD is helping prepare them though, to, to be whatever it is they want to be?
You know, they both, like I said, go to, go to Caldwell. And I just, I just think that, that elementary school and now middle school gives them so many tools to be well-rounded in life. That's such an important part of life to me is, is being well-rounded. And so it, you know, a day at Caldwell is so different than a day at school when I was coming up. You know, they got like five different arts things that they're, they do throughout the week, you know, you know, one day it'll, and they get specials that they get to choose from. And so, you know, so, you know, it could be an instrument, it could be guitar lessons, could be drums. They had Drumline last year and they're gonna pick that back up. But just the deviation from straight up, you know, learning, and I think a lot of our education's changed. You know, we know we can't just sit a kid and expect them to stay still for, for seven or eight hours. So, but they especially get the opportunity kind of blend learning with the arts. And so it might not feel like learning too much. And so they're a little more engaged.
It's too fun, right?
It's too fun. I always say, you know.
How can it be learning? We're having fun, but they are.
Caldwell's tagline should be, what did you do at school today? And then they should show all the things going on over there. Cause it's amazing. And, and I'm so proud that we offer that. So I think it's preparing them, preparing them to be well-rounded. And if you look at the scores, Caldwell is always, here's, I'm like pitching.
Right.
But they're always up there. They're always great. So I think there's something to it.
Well, and what's really cool is this year Caldwell, they've added the eighth grade. So they have completed the middle school transformation and they are the only fine art magnet school in all of East Texas. I mean, it's, it's great to be able to have that, especially in our district.
And I, I know a lot of people say, well, yeah, I got the one kid that, that is like that. But I'm, I'm telling you, that experience is good for every single kid, you know, because art is so different in so many ways. You know, you don't, just because you're an artist doesn't mean that you're one outgoing or one good at drawing or anything like that. So I mean, it is a blend of different personalities and, and I just think it's good for every kid to be able to, and they, they get to, they get to practice on a historical stage. I mean, pretty much daily at Caldwell Auditorium. I mean, you've got guys like BB King and Willie Nelson and elders.
You're sharing that stage that they played on.
Yeah, man, there's DNA in that stage. There's sweat there. No, not at all. So.
Very cool. Well, I came on board with Tyler ISD, I guess, gosh, there's a little over a year now. And one of the first things that I remember when I came on board was I went to a team of eight meeting. And for those that may not know what a team of eight meeting is, it's the superintendent and the school board. And I remembered y'all were tasked with coming up with some sort of an item or something that represents you as a person and kind of your calling in life and may even be a part of the reason why you are on the school board. And that story has stuck in my mind. And it has to do with the bracelet. And I would love for you to share that now with everybody out there that's listening.
Sure. It's, that's such a good memory. And first of all, we're so thankful to have you on board.
Well, thank you. I'm glad to be here.
I mean, I think we're meant to be where we are at the time we're there. And, and man, who would have thought when you came on all the stuff we would, what you would have had to have dealt with. So you're, you're the perfect person for the time. And so I'm sure we'll talk about all that later. But that was in a very good memory. That was a, that's just a little, and I wish I, I should have brought it in. It's in my truck. I keep it on the gear shift there of my 2001 Dodge Ram with 280,000 miles on it.
Proud of that, aren't you? Yeah, that's awesome.
But that was a bracelet that I, I got in Armenia. So I graduated from, from Baylor or it was a summer before I graduated. We went on a mission trip to Armenia. I went there twice. So I think I got it on that first trip. And, you know, we went there and worked with orphans and soup kitchen and stuff like that. And just joined up with another ministry that was already, you know, working. And so we just came alongside of them and, and helped where we could. But, you know, one of the kids there gave me that bracelet and I've always kept it. And, and it, that time of life for me specifically, you know, it was a, it was close to a transition point. You know, you're, you're getting done with college. And now we're thinking about, you know, career. But, you know, going over there and, and serving and helping in any way I could. And then the fact that, you know, you're in places that, you know, the, I mean, we, we do have poverty here. I recognize that. But this specific city was one that had been flattened by an earthquake in the late eighties, you know, when the Soviet Union had fallen. And at the same time, Armenia was a part of the Soviet Union. So I think it was the city of Gumri, I think is what it was, but I might be wrong. But anyway, it was flattened and the Soviet Union couldn't lend any help. And, and so some other countries did come alongside and they brought all these, you know, Conex containers, which are what are on the back of 18 wheelers, you know, and they had temporary housing there. Well, that, you know, nearly 20 years later, back in oh four, or oh four, what was that? That would have been, yeah, about 16 years later, they were still there and people were living in them. You know, and it's just, it's just kind of a next level type of poverty. And the fact that they were so happy just to meet us, we're strangers, you know, we were from a different country, but they were so happy to meet us. And they were giving us whatever they had, you know, and just as gifts. And that touched me and it does touch me. And so it reminds me that, you know, no matter my position in life, I always need to be giving. I need to be giving back, whether, you know, I have little or, or much, whatever blessings I'm blessed with, they need to be shared. And then secondly, serving, you know, I just love being able to go and, you know, you might not have resources to give, but, and time is tough as well with kids, but just sharing that with people, I think it goes a long way. We need help. So many people need help. They just need volunteers. And so I love doing that. And, and so that was, you know, and then sharing my faith. I mean, that, or being a part of that, just being the hands and feet of, of God there that, you know, those are things I like doing. I enjoy doing.
I do think that, that, that part of you, not only your service then, but your desire to give in a bunch of different areas of your life, throughout your life, is one of the reasons that you were awarded by the Chamber of Commerce, the Windsor Award today. You're a little shocked to get that award caught off guard. What was your reaction to that? I mean, that is a big deal.
Well, you know, yeah, some of my family knew that that was coming and they didn't tell me. So kudos to them for keeping it under their hat. And yeah, it goes to, I guess the person that the chamber deems as somebody who's served the community well that's under 40. And it was funny because, you know, I don't anticipate getting awards and I don't expect to get awards. I don't live my life to get awards or do things in order to get awards. So yeah, of course, it was way off my radar. And it was funny though, there, when, when they were about to, you know, kind of go into announcing it and saying somebody under 40. And I was saying, I'm 39. So pretty much, I missed that boat. Yeah. I mean, I thought, oh, yeah. And then, so Lindsey Harrison, who won it last year, formerly Lindsey Shaver, before she was married, we were class of 99 together. And she got it last year and she was running down, you know, my bio. And so midway through, I'm like, well, she's talking about me.
Just kind of dawned on you. Like, wait a second.
Yeah. I mean, my, my cup is, is overflowing and, you know, it's that, few awards are individual awards and, and, you know, I'm pretty sure I got it because I serve on the school board and we've been through some, some tough times and, and, you know, are in the midst of, of some, some tough times there. But to me, that's a team award. I mean, totally. Cause you know, I'm not, you know, you got a good superintendent and you got good staff from top to bottom. And so any, I can't really take credit. Yes, I ran unopposed three times. And, and I ended up being president of the board during a time in which we would see some things that were kind of generational happening, you know, we'll all talk about, you know, for the rest of our lives. And, but you know what? Like I said, God puts us in places that he wants us at the right time. And so I guess I was there and that's an honor. And I thank the people at the chamber for, for recognizing that. It's just so cool.
Well, congratulations. And I do, I have to admit, it's very well deserved because you have been a calm in the storm of such a crazy year. You know, just kind of thinking back over this past year. And it's easy for me because I completely switched careers after 20 years. So I kind of remember the entire year in, in a timeline format, but you know, hiring the only six A football coach in East Texas, that was huge. The sudden passing, unexpected passing of a board member, COVID-19. I mean, I remember driving home from a ski trip with my family and I've got the pillow on my lap and my laptop open and I'm fielding phone calls and I'm typing away and it just kind of all came crashing down so fast. And, you know, as a school board, y'all have of all came crashing down so fast. And, you know, as a school board, y'all have had to react to that. And then why not change the name of your two flagship high schools right in the middle of all of that? And, you know, for me, that was probably one of the, the biggest ones because that was on a national platform where we did have calls from CNN and ESPN and, and some, some really big news outlets. Kind of, I know, I don't know if you've read the new Tyler Today article, but being the one that had to oversee the process and kind of proctor that, so to speak, I kind of shared some insight into that. But you also were an integral part of that whole process. Kind of explain why now? I mean, people still have lots of questions about the whole thing.
Of course. Well, you know, it, it wasn't our first rodeo with that. It, it reared its head in 2018. And, you know, I think in some sort of way, it, it greased the skids for 2020. I didn't anticipate that specific issue coming back up so quickly. But hey, you know, 2020 is one of those years. And, and with the, all of the national issues that were going on, it, it really did just kind of fold right into that. And so as soon as, as soon as all that kind of came up, you know, I recognized that we were going to have to deal with this. The board had changed. We had two new board members. And, you know, I felt pretty comfortable about, even though, you know, I hadn't really know, didn't know them that well at the time, you know, I, I felt pretty good about where they stood on that. So the tea leaves weren't too hard to read about where the majority of the board stood. I, I do tell people that in my Tyler ISD, ISD education, early on, I learned to count to four. And when you're sitting on a board of seven, it helps to learn to count to four. And so when you, when you know that four is the majority and you know where the board is leaning, then I had to make the decision to, you know, move forward with the process. And I, you know, knowing what the outcome would likely be. Personally, I'm, I'm a person who likes togetherness and community and peace. And that's kind of my nature, even though I am a competitor, typically I like for things to be peaceful. And so working towards unity was important to me. I was happy to, this time around, get the blessing of a lot of community leaders who I hold in very high regard on every side of town. And that was a part of kind of the process to me that, that, that was very important. If we were going to do it, I needed to have the backing of, of community members that are respected.
And you really did take the interest of the community, of the students, the staff, everybody into consideration during this process. I know some people have been like, oh, they just did it so fast. I think that there was a lot of thought that went into this and it was not.
No, you don't. Yeah. It, it wasn't easy. And it's not, you know, listen, I recognize that it has zero impact on As and Bs, zero, you know? And that, that's our job as successful student outcomes. It's a classroom everywhere. But this was one of those outlier issues that I think the reason that we were able to address it in, in a pretty quick manner, which was a goal of mine as well. I wanted to be done with this by the time school started. And so, you know, it doesn't have anything to do with As and Bs. We, by the time I came to school, you know, Robert E. Lee and John Tyler were just that. I don't, and, and it might've been naivety on my part, but they did not have the connotation that kind of arose since 2017 and 18 and now.
Yeah. You didn't associate it with the name, with the person. It was just the school.
You know, and kids, that's where we went to school. It was the team we cheered for on Friday night. We were pretty diverse as a district then and even more so now. So, but, and, and I get when the world is changing so quickly, that things that comfort you from your past, you don't want those to be taken away. I understand that. And so I was always a proud Robert E. Lee graduate. You know, I'm proud of where I'm from. So I was proud to graduate from my high school. However, you know, after listening to the community and seeing what was going on nationwide and knowing where the majority of the board stood, we had to make the decision to move forward together. And so, yeah, I just wanted to make sure the community, the people that I trusted and respected that are from here, both graduates from John Tyler and Robert E. Lee were okay with it. And it was, I mean, I had everybody's blessing. And, and, and so that meant a lot to me. And so I, I, you know, as far as the decision went, we just had, and as a leader, I guess, on the school board, I felt I had wind at my sails. And, and, and so we moved forward with it. And I was proud to have a 7-0 vote there. I didn't know if I'd get it. But I, I thought it was, it was good. And it was a good to step through that threshold together.
It definitely shows unity with the seven to zero vote. I mean, y'all as a school board came together and really walked through that. And you did it at a time where, speaking of As and Bs, we're in the middle of COVID. We shut down in the spring and moved to online. And, and then as a school board, y'all really had to make some, some big decisions because we already had to look ahead to the fall. That was, you know, change the name was kind of like a sidebar.
We did need to get back to the business of educating kids. That's our job.
Right.
You know, that, and, and we, oh my gosh, in the summer, you know, had summer feeding programs that were going well. There were monumental issues we were having to deal with. And so my deal is if we're going to do it, we need to do it quick and we need to get this behind us. And, and so, so we did. And, and got back to the business of educating kids and got back to school. And we've had such good luck, I think, this year with our positivity rates and everything like that. And so, yeah, it was, it was an issue I never thought I'd have to handle in a million years. But I think I said it at the time, you know, we didn't make that decision, you know, in 1957 or eight.
Right. Y'all didn't name the schools.
Name the schools. You know, we didn't make the decision to change John Tyler from Tyler High to John Tyler at the same time that Robert E. Lee got named, you know? But it was, it was our obligation to deal with it. So we did.
And you, and you, you've done a very good job leading that. The board, y'all also made lots of decisions this summer as well in terms of, you know, approving millions of dollars and looking at the futuristic needs for our children from an educational standpoint. We now have a true blended learning system, Chromebooks for each student, iPads and everything that a teacher needs to teach remotely or from her classroom with no class, all of that. And definitely walking through a crazy time with COVID. And, and we still at this point don't know what's to come with that. We're, you know, still kind of in the middle of that. And, and you've done so with just that cool calmness. Maybe underneath you're screaming, but, but you've, you've been able to do it very.
Zero I can do to control that. I mean, zero. Like, like I said, I didn't name those schools, but that issue was on our doorstep again for the third or fourth time since I've been on the board.
Right. It wasn't going away.
It didn't appear to be going away. I didn't drum up COVID, you know? And so, but, you know, so you just, when things get put on your doorstep, you have decisions to make. And so to me, there's no reason in getting upset or worked up over it. You know, you can't let the moment be bigger than you, you know, even though looking back, they definitely are. I mean, these are really big things going on. But ultimately, you know, you gotta, Marty Crawford's got to run a school district. So how do we do it? You know, let's, let's just kind of chill out and use data to our advantage. And I think we've, we've definitely got a board that has made some very huge generational decisions before all of this. So I think we're prepared and understand that, you know, you, you can't, you know, turn a mountain into a molehill or, I mean, I mean molehill into a mountain or anything like that. You just gotta face it how it is. You gotta, reality's gotta be reality. So what are we going to do about it? So.
Very true. So, so true. Well, Wade, you wear so many hats and there's so many cool things about you as a person. I wish we could get to all of them. I would love if you wouldn't mind playing one more song for us. What, what song will you sing for us this time? And what's the story behind that?
Okay. I, I was talking about, it's funny, we were talking about Armenia and those mission trips and getting over there. And, you know, that transition of life, you know, for a young person, you know, from, I had such a blast in college. I can't tell you how much fun I had. I had so much fun. I stayed an extra year, but it was worth it because I met my beautiful wife.
Oh, see, there was a plan.
But, you know, even then, you know, looking into the future of where do I go? What am, what am I going to do? You know, I quite honestly still don't know what I'm going to do in my life. So there's excitement in, in that aspect. But this is about, you know, I was leaving Baylor and kind of recognizing that it was such a, a good time in life. And so, yeah, that's kind of about that. And.
And is, is there a title to this song or?
Oh gosh.
Not to put you on the spot.
Maybe Drag Me Away or something like that. I don't know.
I like it. Let's hear it.
You have to drag me away. Keep me from dying. Cause I don't want to leave this place. Memories multiplying. You have to tear me apart. And ship me out in pieces. Because the whole of my heart just doesn't want to leave this. And after all these years, you think I learned my lesson? Seeing all your tears and this pattern of regression. But there's one thing that I know. Yeah. Sometimes it hurts when you grow. Don't be afraid of the rain. It'll wash away the pain and cleanse our immortal souls. And as for you over there with blue eyes and long dark hair, I didn't mean to hurt your heart. I didn't want a brand new start, but it's my time to go. And after all these years, you think I learned my lesson? Seeing all your tears and this pattern of regression. But there's one thing that I know. Yeah. Sometimes it hurts when you grow. Don't be afraid of the rain. It'll wash away your pain and cleanse our immortal souls. And after all these years, whoa, you think I learned my lesson? Seeing all your tears, whoa, and this pattern of regression. But there's one thing that I know. Oh, sometimes it hurts when you grow. Don't be afraid of the rain. It'll wash away your pain and cleanse our immortal souls.
Ah, thank you. Thank you so much for sharing your talents, your stories, the laughs that we've had during this.
Of course. And just to let you know, the blue eyes and long dark hair, that was Ashley.
Yes. Good, good. I'm, I'm sure she's glad to know that is her too.
Yeah, she did. I just want everybody else to know.
Thanks so much, Wade.
Yep. I enjoyed it.
Great. Well, I enjoyed having you on. I appreciate you. And thank you all so much for joining us too. Don't forget, you can always subscribe on Apple Podcast and Spotify. We'll see you next time.